We do have a call to order. A meeting of the Williamson County Board of Commissioners. This is the legislative body of Williamson County. And I would ask you three things. If you've got a pager in your pocket, you better turn it off. If you've got a phone in your pocket, you better turn it off. And there'll be no outbursts or anything during this meeting tonight. If there are, you will be politely escorted outside of the building. So please remember that this is the legislative body of Williamson County, and we expect everyone here to honor that situation. First thing that we'll have is our invocation. Commissioner Brandon Hewlett will lead our invocation. Commissioner Chalfont will lead the pledge to the flag. If you would, please stand.
Let us pray. Almighty and everlasting God, please be with us as we do the business of the people of Williamson County tonight. Please work and be with all those here and guide them and make decisions that affect the lives of so many people. Obviously, I ask in Jesus' name and all things aside will be done.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call with all of you that are present, press your present button. For the roll call, Ms. Anderson.
Twenty present or absent. Commissioner Cook absent. Commissioner McCord absent. Commissioner Ernie Williams absent. Commissioner Sherrell Wilson absent.
Reporting to the body, Commissioner Ernie Williams went home sick today. Mr. McCord continues to be confined at NNC. Commissioner Cook is out of town, and so is Commissioner Wilson. So we have four that are out this evening. Approval of minutes of the regular May 8, 2006 County Commission meeting. Copies were mailed to each member of the county commission. A letter to the motion to accept. Motion by Commissioner Walton, second by Commissioner Hester. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Mr. Moon and Stain. Minutes approved. Introduction and acceptance of highway commission minutes. Copies are also mailed to each member of the county commission. A letter to the motion. Motion by Commissioner Mills, second by Commissioner Langston. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Citizens' communication. According to our rules we operate under, we have a 15-minute period set aside for citizens' comments. Tonight, we have six individuals that have signed up to speak. And thusly, we'll have roughly two and a half minutes per person to address the commission. The first one that's signed up is Mr. Peter Jenkins. If you would, when you come forward, give us your name, address, and address the commission,
Hi, son. Okay, sorry. My name is Peter Jenkins. I live at 1080 Old Kedron Road in Spring Hill, Tennessee. I don't even live in Williamson County. I live in Murray County. But I think I represent many people that live outside Williamson County. I spend huge amounts of money in Williamson County. Our daughter goes to BGA. We go to Church of Christ Community. We go to the orthodontist here. We do almost all our shopping at Cool Springs, Parisian's, TJ Maxx, Borders, Barnes &amp; Noble, Starbucks. We eat at all your restaurants. We go to Moody's. We go to Alexander's and buy cards. Sheridan School of Dance, Publix, Costco, Walmart, Lowe's, Home Depot. We spend a lot of money here, which of course means sales tax to Williamson County and just a bunch of money to Williamson County. And we love Williamson County, and we appreciate it. I even spent five days recently at Williamson Medical Center. I had a terrible infection in my leg from a farm accident. They took great care of me, and I appreciate them. But we would seriously appreciate your support of our right to have our own hospital in Spring Hill. We're the fastest-growing community in Tennessee. We may be the -- I know it's hard for some people to even hear, but Spring Hill could be the largest city in Williamson County and Murray County. And we would love to have our own hospital, and we would appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Chandler and Anderson.
Hello. My name is Chandler Anderson. I live at 558 DB Circle in Spring Hill, Tennessee. This hospital issue has certainly been a motion one, and it seems like everybody has an opinion. But I think decisions have to be made on facts. Give you a couple of facts here. One, heart disease is the number-one killer of people in the United States today. One in three of you will die from coronary artery disease. One of the most deadly manifestations of coronary artery disease is acute MI, or heart attack, as it's commonly known. Another fact, when you have a heart attack, you have about 90 minutes to get that artery open until tissue starts to die. Really, the standard of care in this community, set by Murray Regional and Williamson Medical Center, is emergency angioplasty. It opens the artery. It's a definitive treatment most of the time. Standard of care is important, because that means when someone goes to a hospital, that's what they expect to receive. When I go to Kroger, I expect to receive, you know, groceries, a bag, somewhere to slide my cards and leave. People expect certain things from hospitals. The problem with not meeting the standard of care is you put people at risk. If you don't get that artery open, you will have some complication from that heart attack. The most common, or one of the most common, is congestive heart failure. Many of you either have it or have family members that do. It's one of the most prevalent chronic illnesses in America. If you're going to have a hospital, and you're going to hold it out to be a full-service hospital, I believe people deserve, if they feel like they need a hospital, they deserve to have a hospital that meets the standard of care. HCA CON clearly depicts that it will not have the capability of providing emergency angioplasty. So people who present there expecting the level of care provided at Murray and Williamson will not get that. And for every minute it takes to get that patient to Centennial to have emergency angioplasty, which is the closest HCA facility, they lose 1% of tissue they could have saved. This hospital will have one cardiac bed in its emergency department. Williamson Medical Center has five to six. Murray Regional has seven. There'll be one bed. If you do get that bed, you're not going to be taken for emergency angioplasty. And you'll lose tissue because you felt like it was a full-service hospital.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Michael Glass.
Thank you very much for letting me speak. My name is Michael Glass, 1605 Zurich Drive in Spring Hill, Tennessee. Very much like Chandler, I do like facts to be presented. I do like people to make decisions based on facts. I've done quite a bit of review of the CON of not only this particular Spring Hill hospital, but various hospitals in the past, both Murray Regional and Williamson Medical. And I think the purpose of the CON and the purpose of the whole process is for them to rule based on the facts of the case presented by, in this case, HCA TriStar and the Spring Hill Hospital. I would urge you, please, to not pass a resolution that would hinder the CON process, the process that the state goes about in determining who does and does not need a hospital. I do think the city of Spring Hill, with 24,000 people today and only going to increase to, you know, 50,000 in the next five years, is kind of a staggering thought. And to say that right now, we're 15 miles, excuse me, from the closest hospital, in a life-or-death situation, you know, that is a problem. And in a community with the number of families that we have right now, the number of children that we have in the community, I think there needs to be a hospital closer than 15 miles, especially considering and looking at the CON, that 80% of the projected patients coming to this hospital are within a five-mile radius of the city limits of Spring Hill. So I understand that you need to look out for the best interest of Williamson Medical. I mean, that's your job, you're Williamson County Commissioners. But I would ask that you please not vote in favor of a resolution that would hinder hospital care for citizens in Williamson County, which of the Spring Hill's 24,000 citizens, over 18,000 of those are Williamson County citizens. So again, I would urge you not to pass this resolution, hurting our chances both today and in the future of receiving hospital care, whether it's from HCA TriStar this year or whether it's from someone else down the line. And that's exactly what this resolution would do. Speaking to Chandler Anderson's comment about a cath lab, I do feel that a 64-slice CT scan would more than compensate for the amount of time needed to, you know, properly assess a patient in terms of their heart condition. But again, thank you very much for your time.
Brandon McCullough.
Good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to stand before this board. I've been an elected official in the city of Spring Hill, one of nine years. Seen a lot of phenomenal growth in our town. I represent Ward 1, and Ward 1 is comprised of Murray County and Williamson County. And as Mr. Glass just stated, 83% or 82% of our people right now in Spring Hill actually live in Williamson County. So I would respectfully wish that you would look at this resolution, again, as others have said tonight, and not do anything that might hinder the chances of us getting a hospital here in Spring Hill, because we do have 10,000 lots approved right now to be built on. We have a planning commission meeting tonight where the mayor is right now. Is approving other lots to be built on. So if we didn't approve anything else tonight, and we said that's it, we're still going to be looking at about 40,000 people plus in the next four years. And that's where we're trying to redistrict our lines now, because we're looking at having at least 40,000 to 50,000 people in Spring Hill in the next four or five years. And right now, the hospital services, there's nothing against Murray Regional or Williamson County. They're fine hospitals. But I think Spring Hill's going to need a hospital. The majority of our population are small children and teenagers, and they need a lot of emergency care. And sometimes it's going to take 20 to 40 minutes to get an ambulance down and get an ambulance back to the hospital. And I don't want that on my hands, that I did something to hinder someone's, you know, health care when they need to really get some emergency services. It might not have all the bells and whistles that this gentleman first said that we needed, but it's a start. It's better than what we've got now. So I would just respectfully ask you, as you look at this tonight, to keep that in mind. I want to thank Williamson County for supporting Spring Hill. We have two great commissioners over here to my left. One thing, especially our library, when Murray County kind of kicked us out of the library system a few years ago, G. Hayes and Mr. Lynch came to our rescue along with this board. And we really appreciate what you've done. And if you get a chance to come down and look at our new library, I think you'll be pleased with it. So I appreciate this board. I appreciate Williamson County, what you do for Spring Hill. But I appreciate you looking real close to this resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Good afternoon. I'm just happy to be up here to talk to you all people and try to plead with you that we need a hospital down at Spring Hill. Just a reminder that the state agency, I think, is going to determine if we're going to get a hospital or not. Of course, there's a lot of opposition everywhere, and I can understand their feelings. But I've lived in Spring Hill now for 45 years, and I've come awfully close to losing my neighbor next to me because ambulance was 20 minutes getting there, and she liked to die in my arms, totally. So if we had had a hospital there right away, then she would have come through this real well, but didn't. The new hospital, I understand, is going to have 13 emergency rooms in it, more than enough, I think, to take care of our population, or enough to take care of our population when we get everything built out that we've got planned now. Like Mr. Cullis said, we've got 10,000 lots already approved to build, and more coming in every month, condominiums and a little bit of everything. So with a group of the people, 40,000 to 50,000 people, within a 10-mile radius of Spring Hill, I think we definitely need a hospital there. And I would just would like the board to look at the situation, put yourself in our shoes. You would be wanting a hospital, too. And I would just wish that all of you would take a good look at it and try to, if you see fit, to try to help us get a hospital in Spring Hill. I apologize for the mayor not being here. He's in a zoning meeting tonight. He was going to try to be here, but he just didn't make it. So again, thank you for your -- and look at it real close for us, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Miles.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm out of breath. I just left that meeting as well, and they're still dealing with some issues there. So thank you for your patience. I'm David Hubner. I live at 2108 Burgess Lane in Spring Hill, been a resident there for three years. I'm president of Wingate Estate Homeowners Association, representing about 550 homes in that area. We are staying to benefit by being about five minutes from a hospital. We surveyed our homeowners, talked to a lot of them, and haven't found any yet in our community that are opposed to this. Now, I hear a lot about, well, it's just not enough that you want it. I've had people come to me and say, well, friends that are in some other parts of Murray County or Williamson County that live in small towns, and they say, what if we wanted a hospital? And I said, you know, if you were achieving the size we were achieving, we could make a case for it. I was glad to hear the other day that a reporter called Mount Pleasant, which is -- I teach in Murray County. I know that town very well. It's a great little community, a few thousand people. And they asked one of the city officials there, are you guys going to consider a resolution to oppose this hospital? And the official said, and why do we do that? Why don't we let Spring Hill handle their own business, and we'll handle ours? And we appreciate that attitude. I know Meryl Everett would say the same thing. Now, if Mount Pleasant was growing at the rate we were going, we'd love to see a hospital there. We wouldn't interfere with that business, though. That would be their business. I also understand that you're saying, well, it's not the same thing as building a new target, because we're talking about regional medical needs. Folks, my regional medical needs aren't being met. I can go to Williamson Medical Center. I've been there. Fine hospital. And Murray Regional Hospital. But folks, they're too far. They're just too far. I want nearby medical service. It's not a question of being caught in traffic, having to go 30, 35 minutes away. If you've ever been to Patinsville or some of those other exits on 65, you're going to get stuck in traffic. I don't want that to be a situation, ambulance or not, or just typical surgery care. I've got grandkids that live in that area. I want to be able to be nearby. Now, I've pastored churches in Texas for 17 years, and one of the things I've found as a minister was that people want not just nearby physical care, they want nearby family, emotional, and spiritual care. To me, this becomes a bigger issue that maybe we can't present in government ventures, but it's a spiritual issue as well, too. When I ministered to families and had to go to hospitals far away, and those families had to deal with traveling back and forth, they felt distant, they felt lonely. I want my families, of which there are many in that area, to be able to see the impact of what their presence can be for the healing and the recovery of those patients. It's an important thing. If I'm dealing with a grandchild who's having surgery, and I can run home, maybe back in a few minutes, put the dog out or something, that's very important to me. Again, if we were a little community that we were in the late '80s, some folks want that back, but it's not going to happen, we wouldn't be asking for this hospital. But we're at 23,000-plus, and our best projections are 45,000 by 2010. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the citizens' communication part of our agenda this evening. So certainly thank our guests that are here. Communications and messages. We have a late filed resolution. Resolution number 60628. Resolution appropriating $187,000 for the hurricane evacuation relief funds for salaries and pass-through to nonprofits from Commissioner Jones. Any objection to hearing 60628 this evening? I see no objection, so we'll add that and accept it on the agenda at the appropriate location. Communications and messages. Also, we have a proclamation declaring amateur radio week. And Diane, in a moment, will be giving Rogers' report, because he is out of town, and he's asked me to present this resolution tonight. Also, Bill Jorgensen is not able to be here with us, so at this time, I'd ask the representative from the WE CARES program to come forward to the podium. This proclamation is declaring amateur radio week, whereas there are approximately 300 federally licensed amateur radio operators residing in Williamson County, more than 50 of whom are active members of the Williamson County Amateur Radio Emergency Service, WE CARES. And whereas WE CARES members have consistently demonstrated their commitment to public service by willingly volunteering their individual time and utilizing their personal radio equipment at no cost for the benefit of the citizens of Williamson County in order to provide a source of reliable radio communication support during natural disasters or other public emergency situations. And whereas, in addition to their regular participation in local emergency communications training, exercises, Williamson County amateur radio operators also participate in an annual nationwide Field Day, emergency communications preparedness exercise sponsored by the American Radio Relay League, the National Association of Amateur Radio Operators. Whereas the 2006 Field Day exercise will take place on June 24th through 25th, now therefore be it resolved at this Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on the 12th day of June 2006, hereby proclaim the week of June 18 through June 24 as amateur radio week in recognition and appreciation of the continuing public service contributions made by Williamson County amateur radio operators who provide a source of emergency radio communication support. And call upon all citizens of Williamson County to join us in this worthy tribute. This is signed by the mayor and me as chairman of the commission. And I'd like to present this to WE CARES. I'd ask you to come forward, and then we'll have you make whatever appropriate comments that you'd like to make. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Naron, on behalf of the amateur radio operators in Williamson County, and more specifically, the more than 50 of them who are actively supporting our county amateur radio emergency service work, I am pleased and honored to accept this proclamation. I'd like to specifically take a moment and express thanks to Mayor Anderson, Commissioner Naron to you, and Commissioner Hayes, and to Bill Jorgensen, head of the county's Department of Emergency Communication. All of you have been very actively supporting and encouraging our work throughout the years, and we appreciate that very much. In fact, our ability to continue to carry out our public service mission is largely dependent upon that continued support. The proclamation mentioned the annual Field Day operating exercise, which will be held this year on the weekend of Saturday, June 24, and Sunday, June 25. Many of our county's amateur radio operators will be actively participating in that nationwide event by setting up several temporary amateur radio stations at a site just south of the main building at Ag Expo Park. And I would invite each of you, if you have time, to stop by and visit the site sometime between 1:00 Saturday afternoon, the 24th, and 1:00 Sunday afternoon, the 25th. It will be a very good way to get a close-up look at some of our operating capabilities. The proclamation that I have received and the meaningful recognition of amateur radio service and the amateur radio operators of Williamson County is sincerely appreciated. Thank you again, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Now proclamation and recognition of Mr. C.L. Mack McGeehee. Roger's absence, Ms. Diane will be presenting this information.
Yes, sir. As Chairman Naron alluded to earlier, Mayor Anderson is out of town, and it gives me great pleasure this evening to be able to present this proclamation of appreciation to Mr. C.L. Many of us know him as Mr. Mack McGeehee. Whereas C.L. Mack McGeehee retired after 14 years of service, serving as an exemplary member of the Industrial Development Board of Williamson County. And whereas this action represents a second retirement from a distinguished 44-year business career with Swifton Company in 1979, after graduating in 1937 from what was later named Middle Tennessee State University. And whereas upon their retirement, Mack and his wife, Margaret, settled in the city of Fairview, where Mack was appointed by the county commission to serve as a member of the Industrial Development Board. And whereas the Industrial Development Board, among other civic endeavors, enjoyed the honor of having Mack serve both the city of Fairview and Williamson County, thus allowing him to use his business talents and energy to make a significant contribution to the development of this community. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Williamson County, meeting in regular session this, the 12th day of June 2006, that we present this proclamation to Mr. Mack in appreciation of his leadership, management experience, and civic service, which has contributed substantially in shaping an exceptional community in which to live and do business. And be it further resolved on behalf of the Williamson County Industrial Development Board, that we thank you for being an important part of our community as one of the first seven members of the Industrial Development Board appointed by this county commission on March 9, 1992, with subsequent consecutive appointments until May 19, 2006. We thank you very much.
You know, after all of these years that you do this, and you do that, and you just don't realize that your neighbors are recognizing the fact that what you're doing is actually helping the community. It's been my pleasure, after many years, to serve on this committee and have enjoyed every minute of it, and hope all during that period of time that I was making a contribution to the community and to the city. Thank you very much. It has been my appreciation.
One of the things I think is so important, Mr. Mack just celebrated his 92nd birthday.
92nd.
Can you believe that? 92nd birthday.
That's because I take such good care of you.
The good thing about this 92nd birthday is I don't know it. I'm not that old.
Thank you.
Mr. Mack also was a charter member of the Crime Stoppers of Williamson County. Mr. Mack was one of the first board members on Crime Stoppers and served for many years in that company. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. It was my pleasure.
Thank you, sir.
I want to express to the chairman and the commission that I've had the pleasure working with Mack for the last 15 years. One of the original members of the Industrial Development Board.
Development Board, everything from Ford Motor Credit, Telco, to the last years, 2005, Community Health Systems, Healthways, and then Nissan. So again, Mac, thanks for all the wonderful service and the work that you've done for the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Walton, you have a proclamation, sir?
I had to honor, early May, to meet at Rescue Squad with some members of Fireman's Fund, and they donated some money to the Rescue Squad. For that, we'd like to honor them, and Mr. Frost was instrumental in that. And we have a proclamation of appreciation, whereas Williamson County is fortunate to have numerous individuals who have chosen fire and rescue careers, both paid and volunteer positions. And whereas, there is a need to provide appropriate resources and equipment to the various national and local firefighting departments in an effort to help ensure their safety while they protect our citizens and their personal property. And whereas, Fireman's Fund Insurance Company began in 1863 in San Francisco and sequentially established a Fireman's Fund Heritage Program as a means of offering help in the community through its outreach programs. And whereas, Robert Frost, president of Frost Specialty LLC, submitted application on behalf of the Williamson County for grant funds for the purchase of turnout gear for the various volunteer firefighters. And whereas, Frost Specialty and Fireman's Fund Insurance Company recently donated $48,838 to Williamson County Rescue Squad for purchase of 60 air packs and 11 sets of turnout gear. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Williamson County, Tennessee, meeting in regular session this 12th day of June 2006, hereby express our appreciation to Robert Frost and the Fireman's Fund Insurance Company for their generosity and assistance given to Williamson County Rescue Squad. Signed by myself, Houston Naron, and Mayor Anderson. Mr. Frost, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. You know, as Williamson County continues to grow and the wealth of Williamson County, we need to consider as much as we can for the firefighters, the protection of the community. Thank you.
Report of county offices. County Mayor Anderson has a report Diane will present to us. Ms. Giddens.
This memo, you all have a copy in front of you this evening, is from Mayor Anderson, stating that he was recently selected to serve on the American Hospital Association's Committee on Governance and is currently attending a national AHA conference. In his absence, he submitted this written report. Williamson County Property Assessor Dennis Anglin's office recently completed the five-year reappraisal for Williamson County. As a result of the new countywide assessed value of $6.1 billion, the Budget Committee intends to recommend to you all in July a new certified tax rate of $2.31. Mr. Anglin had planned to be here this evening to address any specific questions you may have, but he was unable to be here. But I'm sure if anybody has any, if you can either let me know or give Dennis a call at the office, he'll be glad to help you. In your packet tonight, there are nine resolutions reflecting various funding requests. Budget Director David Coleman is available to provide additional information and answer questions regarding those resolutions. Also included on the agenda this evening is Resolution Number 6067, a resolution in opposition of the requested certificate of need for the proposed tri-star hospital in Spring Hill, Tennessee. In Chapter 107 of the Private Acts of 1957, a nonprofit hospital district known and designated as Williamson County Hospital was created and established for and in behalf of Williamson County, Tennessee. Section 10 of the above referenced Private Act authorizes the Williamson County Commission to appropriate to the hospital district from the general funds of the county such sums as may be required to commence the operation of said district, and thereafter such sums as may be required to pay any deficits arising in the operation and maintenance of said district. And are authorized and empowered also to levy a tax sufficient for this purpose on all taxable property within said county, which tax shall be a special tax and shall be in addition to the levy for general county purposes. Since its inception, Williamson County Hospital, doing business as Williamson Medical Center, has successfully managed and operated the facility. It is with sound fiscal management and oversight of the hospital Board of Trustees, appointed by you as members of the legislative body, that Williamson Medical Center is an integral part of this community. It is currently one of the top five largest employers with an annual payroll of approximately $49 million and approximately 1,100 full-time equivalent employees. From time to time, the hospital Board of Trustees has requested and received approval from this legislative body to issue bonds for the expansion of the facility. As a part of the terms of the request, the hospital has and continues to maintain a debt coverage ratio of at least 1.5. In 2000 and 2002, the Board of Trustees received approval, as required by the Tennessee Health Facilities Commission, for a $60 million major renovation of the hospital and a $10.5 million addition of 40 new inpatient beds. These two projects, combined with other additions in the Williamson Tower Medical Office Building, represented total commitment of over $80 million to this community for health care. As a part of that overall commitment, the Williamson County Board of Commissioners also approved the issuance of $20 million in general obligation bonds of Williamson County as an investment in this facility expansion. That was done through Resolution 60225. Tennessee Code annotated provides that the county mayor is the chief financial officer of the county. As such, I feel it is my fiduciary responsibility to provide an overall fiscal snapshot to the legislative body as matters come before them for action. Although the proposed tri-star hospital is within the boundaries of an adjacent county, it is my belief that it could have a direct fiscal impact on the success and future of the county-owned nonprofit Williamson County Hospital, which is an entity of Williamson County government. Therefore, as county mayor and chief financial officer of the county, I respectfully request your support and approval this evening for the passage of Resolution Number 6067. Thank you.
Any questions from any commissioner on this report? From the mayor? The mayor in absentia? Thank you, Diane.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, we have in your packet tonight the normal financial information we present to you each month. We again have a good report from the Cool Springs Conference Center with a $46,000 check to Williamson County. Looking at their year-to-date figures, they're just having an excellent year, and we've had some really good months this year, so we're proud of that. We also have your privileged tax report for the month of April in your packet. Privileged tax continues to be strong. We look forward to a good year there. We think we'll have a record year for this fiscal year in privileged tax collections. Also, as I told you last month, we threw the budget process, we're kind of behind on our monthly reports, so we've caught you up at least until we've given you February, March, and April. And at the July meeting, we'll have May and June, we'll complete the year. So if you have any questions on those, you can feel free to call my office, and we'll try to deal with those. So that brings us up to date on that. Mr. Chairman, if any questions, I'd be glad to address those, and I believe we'll be talking about the bond resolutions later on in the meeting.
Any questions of Mr. Coleman? See none. Thank you, sir. Williams County School Superintendent, Dr. Rebecca Sharber.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank you for allowing our late filed resolution to be heard this evening. We apologize that we needed to file that in a late manner. However, it was only barely a week ago that the state informed us that they needed us to have the county legislative body actually appropriate this money, because the money will go away at the end of June if the county legislative body does not appropriate it. So we appreciate your listening to it, and we'll be glad to give you further explanation when we get there in the agenda. Just some quick updates on the buildings and the building that's going on within the school district. The additions that we're doing at Heritage Middle and at Winstead Elementary are proceeding well, and we still do expect to have those completed by the opening of the school system or the school year in August. We are almost ready to break ground on the new Spring Hill Elementary School, and I am intending to try to have a name for that school by the middle of August, when the school board meets in August, if August is planned, so we won't have to continue to call it the new Spring Hill Elementary School. We're trying to get that done quickly. Bid should be in mid-July, so we should have an idea by then of the costs that we're really dealing with. So we're working hard on that. We will be organizing an official groundbreaking for that school, and certainly we will be getting invitations to you when that is organized. We are still working on the land for the new Nolansville School. You probably read about that in the newspaper, but in case you didn't, we are having a struggle with landowner there for the best piece of property that we have been able to find at this point. So you'll probably hear more about that, but the board will be addressing that at their meeting this month. We have almost moved all of the portables we own to Spring Hill to accommodate the growth that we'll see this coming school year before the new elementary school is open. There will be many portables in Spring Hill this coming year. And Franklin High School should be totally complete by the beginning of the school year, and I'm sure as you go past there, you will continue to notice the difference as we proceed with that project. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have at this point.
Questions of Superintendent Sharber? See none.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hospital report, Dennis Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. I'll kind of keep mine light tonight. Everything's going well. Knock on wood, construction is ahead of schedule. Fourth floor will open on June 20th. Third floor will open July 15th. That'll give us an additional 42 beds. That'll bring us up to 158 beds, 20 of which will be ICU/CCU beds. Then the rest of the renovations and the women's center on the second floor will open in April of 2007. All the work should be done at that point in time. Second, physician recruitment is going very well. We have numerous physician groups out of Nashville and very many specialties that are wanting to come and have already signed contracts for our building. We will be adding some new services with those doctors coming down here. The third thing, probably one of the most important, is we're getting ready for joint commission, our accreditation from the Joint Commission of Hospitals. So we're waiting for them, with fingers crossed that we'll at least know that they're in town, maybe through hotel callers or somebody else telling them, hey, we're here. They don't announce their surveys anymore. Fourth thing, and one that's taken quite a bit of time, is the opposition of the Spring Hill Hospital. We're opposing it. We don't have any choice. If it's approved, it will stymie our future expansion and our technology growth. When we did our certificate of need, we included Spring Hill in it. And I'd just like to close with saying, we are Williamson County's hospital, and we're your hospital. And if there's any questions, I think the packet went out to each one of you. If there's any questions, I'd try to answer them for you.
Any questions of Mr. Miller? See none. Thank you, Dennis. Any other committee wishing to report at this time? Commissioner Mills?
I'd just like to announce, I think it's on your, on the desk, but the Human Resource Committee will not be meeting for lack of business.
Thank you. Any other committee wishing to report? See none. Moving on to elections and appointments. County Commission appointment to the Board of Health, four-year term expiring, April 4/10. Mr. William Garrett is deceased, pharmacist serving on that board, and the nomination is Dr. Marty Myers. That's the recommendation. Intertain a motion? Motion by Commissioner Lynch, second by Commissioner Mills, to approve Marty Myers III for this nomination. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Industrial Development Board, filling unexpired term, expiring 3/08. Resigned, Mr. C.L. McGeehee. Nomination, Diane P. Commissioner Jones, who was the second? Commissioner Hughes, the second, for Diane Ellis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Veteran Services Officer, filling unexpired term, term expiring 6/07. Colonel Stan Tyson has resigned. The recommendation and nomination for appointment is Harold Ken Marshall. Commissioner Moon, the motion. Commissioner Barnwell, the second. And I understand that Ken is here, and also Colonel, bring him up, Colonel, and introduce him, if you would.
Ladies and gentlemen, it gives me pleasure to introduce to you an old friend of mine, Ken Marshall. I've known him for approximately 12 years. Ken spent 30 years with the VA doing the same thing from the other end that he'll be doing for Williamson County, if you support him this evening, and I encourage you to do so. And I'm gonna grab one more second. Memorial Day, we had a wonderful program, and most of you folks were there, and I appreciate your attendance, I appreciate everything you did, and the people of Williamson County owe you a tremendous debt, and they know it, and they appreciate it. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
He's got less hair than I've got, so he's gotta be a good person.
Ken, you wanna say anything?
Well, I'm under no illusions as to the size of the shoes that somebody's gonna have to fill when Colonel Tyson leaves. I do appreciate Stan and the mayor recommending me, and I'll, if approved, I'll do my best to make sure their confidence in me was not misplaced.
Thank you, sir. All who's in favor of the recommendation of Harold Ken Marshall, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Did we get a, did I get a motion? I get ahead of my schedule. Okay. Hospital Board of Trustees, there is no recommendation to fill that position, still being reviewed. Library Board of Trustees, we have James Valian Court also recommended. James Valian Court. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval of Valian Court. Jerry Bull has withdrawn from consideration for the Library Board of Trustees, so we will bring back and be working to fill that vacancy for the Library Board of Trustees, and Commissioner Barnwell says that hopefully he'll have something next month. Library Board of Trustees, regional, three-year terms expiring 6/09, is Jack Vickery Jr. Recommendation is Jack Vickery Jr., and also Manny Brazil. Recommendation, Manny Brazil, will entertain a motion?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Barnwell, second by Commissioner Shalfont. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show it unanimous. Thank you. Notaries, you have the list of notaries that have been presented for consideration by Mrs. Anderson. Will entertain a motion to accept these. Commissioner Mills, the motion. Commissioner Davis, the second. Any discussion on these notaries? Commissioner Walton? I will abstain. My name's on this list. Okay. Commissioner Walton will abstain because his name's on the list. Any other discussion? All in favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Show one abstention. Commissioner Walton abstaining. No consent agenda? No unfinished business? New business? No zoning? Moving on to appropriations, Resolution 606-2. Resolution transferring funds in the amount of $1,997 between major categories within the 2005-6 Sheriff's Department budget. Commissioner Shalfont?
Motion for approval.
Second by Commissioner Hewlett. Law Enforcement Committee report?
Law Enforcement, 3, 4, 0 against.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee, 4, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Shalfont?
This is just simply transferring funds from the Corrections Division to the Field Division.
Any questions of Commissioner Shalfont on 606-2? Seeing none. 606-2 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please?
20 yes.
Thank you. Motion is adopted. 20 yes, unanimous. Resolution 606-3. Resolution appropriating $150,000 from current revenues and related trustee commission. Commissioner Jones?
Motion for approval.
Second, Commissioner Walton. School Board report is 12 yes, 0 no. Education?
5, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Budget?
Budget Committee, 4, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
There was more tax collected in property tax and sales tax, therefore, the trustees commission has to be raised.
Any questions of Commissioner Jones on 606-3? See none. In favor, 606-3, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please?
20 yes.
Thank you. Resolution adopted unanimously. Resolution 664. Resolution amending the 2005-6 General Purpose School Fund operating budget, $701,000 for petroleum-related products and utilities. Commissioner Jones?
Motion for approval.
Second, Commissioner Mills. School Board is 12 yes, 0 no. Education?
5, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Budget?
Budget Committee, 4, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
This is just the increase that we've had through Katrina and supply and demand. Everybody's felt this. This is the increase in gas and petroleum and diesel.
Thank you. Any more questions? Resolution 606-4, excuse me, 606-4 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please?
20 yes.
Resolution is adopted, 20 yes. Is any objection because the school people are here to pull forward late-file resolution 606-28, and after we do that, our school folks can be finished for the evening? Any objection?
Mr. Chairman, first question, are they gonna stick around? We've got a bunch of school bonds and capital. How are they gonna hang around for that? I would expect that.
I think they stayed the whole evening.
Okay, all right. We'll leave it in order then. Resolution 606-5. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Juvenile Services Budget by $10,000. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds, received from participant fees. Commissioner Shalfont?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Smith. Law Enforcement Public Safety Committee?
Three in favor, 0 against.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted 5, or 4, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Shalfont?
Just briefly, it's, we've been housing additional juvenile offenders, and we've overrun these categories, so move for approval of the $10,800.
Any questions of Commissioner Shalfont on this resolution, 606-5? I see none. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wished to vote? Court of vote, please?
20 yes.
Thank you. 20 yes, 0 no. Resolution 606-6. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Emergency Management Budget by $5,646.44 for reimbursement of costs related to Hurricane Katrina, shelter operations. Commissioner Shalfont?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Hewlett. Law Enforcement Committee?
Three in favor, 0 against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee was 4, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Shalfont?
This is just approving the grants, the state grants for the Katrina relief in the amount of $5,646.44.
Thank you, sir. Questions, Commissioner Shalfont, on this resolution? I see none. In favor of Resolution 606-6, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wished to vote? Court of vote, please?
20 yes.
Thank you. 20 yes. Motion unanimously adopted. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Capital Projects Budget by $530,000 for the purchase of new Sheriff's Department vehicles. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Little. Law Enforcement Committee?
Three in favor, 0 against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted 4, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the annual purchase that was approved for the 2006-07 budget. We get a competitive, more competitive rate if we buy these vehicles now. We get last, the '06 rates for these vehicles, and we've moved these forward every year for about the last three years to get the better purchasing price. Vehicles have been approved by the Budget Committee.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Barnwell on this resolution? I see none. 606-8 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
I just got a question. Are these all replacement vehicles? Are these?
New add-ons for new officers?
There's, I think, 16 replacements, Ricky, and two new for the school resource officers.
Yeah. Some of them, the majority of them will be replacements, but we keep some of those others in backup cars.
Okay.
Depending on the condition of them, but the majority of them gotta be taken out of those.
Okay, so two for the new school resource, for the middle school?
Other questions? If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wished to vote? Court of vote, please?
20 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 606-11. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Solid Waste Convenience Center Budget by $60,000. Revenues to come from solid waste convenience center fund balance. Commissioner Hayes?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Green. Municipal Solid Waste Board?
4, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted 4, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
As you know, the landfill is run as an enterprise fund. The convenience center has a separate accounting. We have to pay the landfill for our tipping fee when we take our trash from the convenience centers. This simply means that we did not estimate as much trash as we did, or solid waste, as we did have to go to the landfill. When we have more growth and more people, we have more waste. So, it's simply to catch up with that and to reimburse our right account and put it in the accounting proper procedure.
Thank you. Any questions of Commissioner Hayes? I see none. In favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wished to vote? Court of vote, please?
20 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 606-12. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 County Clerk's Budget by $10,900. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general funds. Commissioner Lynch?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Hayes, the second. Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee, 4, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Lynch?
What it is, the state has changed some standards on their computer upgrades, working with the county, in order for the county to work with the state on these, which we have to do for the license and tags. We have to call like this. This is a new project, and it wasn't in the budget, so we have to have some new money.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Lynch on Resolution Number 12? I see none. 606-12 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wished to vote? Court of vote, please?
20 yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 606-13. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Success Risk Insurance and the Highway Department Fund totaling $120,000. Revenues to come from fund balances. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Mills. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted 4, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Highway Commission voted 5, 4, 0 against. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
This is to cover the increased insurance cost we've had in the Highway Department as far as risk insurance goes. It's been usually high this year, and based on claims to date and these projected for the remainder of the fiscal year, this should carry us through the end of the year.
Thank you, sir. Questions of Commissioner Green on Number 13? I see no questions. If you're in favor of 606-13, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wished to vote? Court of vote, please?
Walton, you want to vote? Jack? Thank you. 20 yes.
Thank you. Resolution is unanimously adopted. Resolution 606-15. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Animal Control Budget by $3,084.25. Revenues to come from private donations. Commissioner Hester?
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Hancock, the second. Public Health Committee?
4, 6, 4, 0 against.
Thank you, sir. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted 4, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hester?
This is simply money that came from donations, and this is just an accounting procedure, very routine.
Thank you. Questions of Commissioner Hester? I see none. 606-15 is for consideration. In favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wished to vote? Court of vote, Ms. Anderson?
20 yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. 20, 0, no. 606-16. Resolution transferring funds within the 2005-6 General Debt Service of $193,000 for interest payments. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Little. Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee voted 4, 4, 0 against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Now, this is, Williamson County authorized and issued that new debt in a form of capital outlay this fiscal year, and interest payments are due within six months of the closing date, and these interest payments are not, were not calculated in the 2005-2006 budget but necessary to amend the respective budget as follows. There's no new money involved in this. It's just a transfer of funds.
Any questions of Commissioner Green on Number 16? I see none. In favor of Resolution 606-16, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wished to vote? Court of vote, Ms. Anderson?
20 yes.
Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution Number 606-17. Resolution appropriating and amending various 2005-6 county general budgets by $3,850. Revenues to come from unappropriated county general fund balance. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Smith. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted 4, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please?
What this is, is we asked initially, when we found out the cost in gasoline and other utilities was going to be beyond what we budgeted, we'd asked all the departments to go through and adjust their budget and see if they could find the monies. These three have reassessed their budgets, and they are in need of this $3,850 to make up for those deficits they had at the time. This is after trying to find funds within their own budget so far, but these are, you can see we have one for $150, so they've examined their budgets pretty closely, and this is what they've come up with.
Two comments on this resolution. Under unappropriated county general funds, there was an omission of the account code. It should be 101 dot 39000. Under the account code, 101 dot 39000, if we could add that to the resolution, please. That was a typographical omission, so if we could add that. And also, in discussion with the county mayor, he wanted to make sure that on behalf of the commission that we thank the department directors and the heads and the elected officials for working to make this happen, Commissioner Green, because otherwise, we couldn't have been able to do that. And our compliments and thanks to all those that made that possible. Any other discussion on 606-17? Did you get that account number, Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
606-17 is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Has everybody voted, wished to vote? Court of vote, please?
20 yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution 606-18. Resolution appropriating and amending the 2005-6 Circuit Court Clerk's Budget by $5,000. Revenues to come from reserve account. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Davis. Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee voted 4, 4, 0 against.
Explanation, please, Mr. Green?
What this is, is they're in need of various new computer equipment, and the funds are gonna be coming from the filing fees, which they collected at the time.
Questions of Commissioner Green on Resolution Number 18? I see none. In favor of this resolution, press your yes button. Opposed, your no button. Everybody voted, wished to vote? Court of vote, please?
20 yes.
Thank you, ma'am. 20 yes. Unanimously adopted. Now, as we're to the funding resolutions and the bonding resolutions, at this point, resolutions, really the next nine resolutions are all tied together. And Mr. Coleman, if you would, anybody want to take a break? Because this is gonna take a while for him to go through. We're good? Do we want to keep on rolling?
Take a quickie.
Okay, let's take a five-minute recess, and we'll be back at 8:15. David, if you would, proceed, and we'll go through this at your guidance, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In looking at these nine resolutions, we felt like it might be helpful if we kind of take a look at them overall as a package to help you understand what our goal is. And very simply stated, our goal is to have a bond sale about mid-July and to have our closing around the 1st of August, so the funds will be available for the various projects. closing around the first of August, so the funds will be available for the various projects. Just to give you a little bit of history, starting back as late as last July of '05, you approved capital outlay resolutions for the schools and county general solid waste for projects in the '05-'06 budget. And we did capital outlay notes for those in-house, anticipating they would be paid off later in the year in a bond issue. During the year '05-'06, you have approved other intent-to-fund resolutions that we anticipated rolling into that same bond issue. Our intent all along was to have a spring bond sale, May or June. We got to that point in time, and some of the projects were not ready. There were some sites that were still waiting on the land to be purchased. And so, it presented an opportunity to us, and we went and talked to the school department, Director Sharber and Ms. Holman, and we appreciate their cooperation in talking about their projects and what the timing of those might be. So, the opportunity that presents itself to us tonight is to move the spring bond sale that we anticipated May or June to July of '06. In that opportunity, that would allow us to pick up the capital resolutions for the items that were approved by the Budget Committee for the '06-'07 budget. So, rather than having to wait and pick those up in a later bond issue, we'll be able to roll those into this bond issue. By waiting till July, just one month, we'll be able to shift the first principal payment on the new bonds from the '06-'07 budget year to the '07-'08 budget. And that first payment will be approximately three and a half to $4 million. And maybe not the most important, but certainly something that we would think would be important at this point in time, is this would be the first fiscal year in several years that we have been able to avoid a bond sale. So, we would like to work on this shift from the bond sale till July of '06. In order to take advantage of that opportunity, it's going to require us to do two or three things. Number one, we're asking you tonight to move up the capital resolutions for the '06-'07 budget one month, from July to June. These requests have been approved by your Budget Committee. They will be the first four resolutions that you see tonight, '19, '20, '21, and '22. So, those would be for capital equipment and projects for the '06-'07 budget year. Those are the only resolutions you're looking at tonight that you haven't already approved. Also, one requirement, the two capital outlay notes that we did do in July of '05, we are requesting that you give us the authority to issue short-term capital outlay notes to cover those until the bonds are sold. This would be a public bid from local banks, and would look, we'd be looking at a period of time around 60 days. And at that time, we would purchase those capital outlay notes back with the bond funds. And then, lastly, we would ask you to approve the bond resolutions at this county commission in June, rather than waiting till July. This would give us time for the 20-day advertising requirement for GO bonds. We would meet that advertising requirement in time to do the July bond sale, and again, as I said, to have the funds available around the first of August. Now, I realize that's quite a bit of things that we're looking at, but as if I go back to my first statement, our goal is simply to have the bond sale in July and have the funds available. I think Diane has put at each one of your desks tonight a three-page packet that summarizes the bond issue and the resolutions you're looking at tonight. If we could look at those for just a moment, the first one says, "Bond, July, June 2006, County Commission Meeting, Bond Resolutions." That would be the top page. And it's divided into three sections. Hopefully, everyone has a copy of that. As I mentioned a moment ago, the first four resolutions, '19, '20, '21, and '22, are the capital request for equipment and projects for '06-'07 that have already gone through your Budget Committee. They have not been approved by you, so that's why we'd ask you to move on those tonight as intent-to-fund resolutions, so that we could include them in the bond sale. The next two resolutions, '23 and '24, are the resolutions that would give us the authority to bid out the '05-'06 capital outlay note resolutions. We might use that term of a bridge loan for about 60 days until we get to the bond sale, and then those will be paid off. And I would add to that, that will be a public bid from our local banks, will be a competitive bid on those capital outlay notes. And then, the last three resolutions, '25, '26, and '27, are the normal bond sale resolutions that you would see at any bond issue. The first one being the initial resolution that would meet the advertising requirements for the GO bonds. And then, 60626 is the bond resolution for the general obligation bonds, and 60627, the rural school bonds. Combined total of those, approximately $46 million. If you'll turn to the second page titled "Total Issue Sources and Uses," this is a form that our financial advisor, Stevens, prepares for us each time we do a bond. It simply shows you the breakdown between the GO bonds and the rural bonds, and what those funds will be used for. And then, if you'll turn over to the very last page, the third page, you will see a summary of all the resolutions there to be included in this $46 million sale. Again, all of them, you have already voted on before tonight, except for the four that are '06-'07 capital requirements. Mr. Chairman, I'll try to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions of Mr. Coleman? Commissioner Lynch, please.
Mr. Coleman, invariably, in the past, we've, this concerns Resolution Number 22, that we invariably fund the capital outlay request out of the school fund balance. Now, this year, they've taken over $6 million out of the fund balance for the regular operating budget, which I don't agree with, not criticizing anybody, but I don't agree with that. If you add the $7.8 million, it is in here, you're talking about 14 million. According to their report, they don't have 14 million in there, and we shouldn't be using bond money for these kind of capital projects, because a lot of them is too short. We need longer projects. Are we going to issue a capital outlay note that's $7.8 million?
Mr. Chairman, to answer Mr. Lynch's question, and this, we have dealt with this during the budget process also, and this is really not a new question, and we've done this over the last couple of years. The schools have identified the short-term and the long-term projects, Mr. Lynch, and we will do the same thing on the county general bonds. And then, we will structure the bond payments, so that in the first three to five years of the bond payments, we will pay off those short-term type items. And nothing but long-term, you know, roofs, buildings, things of that nature, will be a 20-year bond. The others will be paid off in three to five years.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Commissioner Hayes?
Mr. Coleman, I have a little bit of a concern and dilemma that was presented this weekend, that I'd like to ask the endurance and refresh the memory of this commission. If you remember, last year, or last few months ago, we talked about the additional property at the Ag Expo Park, and how it was supposed to be coming on the market for sale. This committee wanted, this body wanted the mayor to work with the owner to see what, I think the motion was stated to see what negotiations might take place. You were very generous in doing that. At that time, it was to come back to this body, believing there might be a good agreement. A resolution was drawn up and was ready to be filed before the deadline. It was signed by Commissioners Wilson, Moon, Green, Walton, Naren, Lynch, Hayes, and Smith. The evening that we were ready to go before the Property Committee, we heard that this land had been sold for a higher price. So, we did not submit that to the Property Committee for obvious reasons. At that time, in his wisdom, Chairman Ford of the Property Committee mentioned the fact that if it did become available, that he could call another Property Committee meeting prior to this meeting. As late as Saturday afternoon, I received a call that is a possibility, and it is unknown. I'm just going to be as honest as I know how to be. It was an unknown for sure whether that property is sold or not sold. There is a pending on it. We cannot confirm or deny that it may be sold, or it may not be sold, to another buyer. If it should not be sold, and there would be an opportunity for us to purchase it, it would be a very good opportunity. 5.9 acres appraised now, to, the last commercial appraisal was like $236,000 per acre. With sewer out there, it has gone from residential to commercial interstate. That leaves it wide open to being anything that's in the cool spring zoning. That means a fast food, perhaps, a service station, perhaps, or any number of things, perhaps. I bring it up at this time because we're talking about funding. I realize it's not a bond issue. The resolution, as was to be presented, was taking this money out of the fund balance. It is just my wish to convey this to you, and get your opinions, and get your counsel, and see where you feel we need to go. It would be a shame if it is available, and we have an opportunity to further protect our area, making it safer for the kids, the young people, the community people who use that facility, and would have to cross over what could be a very dangerous site. I bring it to you and ask for your counsel, and bring it right now, because we're talking about funding, and even though it's not a bond issue, it would be something that might concern where the placement would be in the writing of our debt service, or something to that effect. Would it have any effect at all on anything that we're voting on tonight if we were to go any further, Mr. Coleman?
Commissioner Hayes, without knowing all the details of it, I don't know that a firm price has been set on it. If you're talking at somewhere around $250,000, Lake, or I don't know.
The resolution was saying not to exceed $750,000.
Okay.
From fund balance.
There are a couple of choices that are coming from fund balance with that amount of money, I think, would be fine. If it were to exceed that by very much more than that, I would be a little concerned with taking like a million and a half out of fund balance, but if it were $750,000, I would not have a problem with that. One other thing we could do, and I appreciate Mr. Sam Cruz is with us tonight from Stevens, and he may have to back me up on this, but the last resolutions on the bonds, '25, '26, specifically dealing with GO bonds, which that's what this would be if we were to put it in a bond resolution, could be amended to a not-to-exceed amount of money. And of course, none of these projects go forth on a bond if they're not voted on by this body. So, if you changed 60625 and '26 to a not-exceed amount of, say, $26,750,000, or $27,000,000, whatever you chose to do, then that would give you time to explore that and come to the July meeting with an intent-to-fund resolution. But again, Sam, am I speaking out of turn on that?
No.
Sam, come on up to the microphone, please.
Our timing gets a little tight for the July sale.
Welcome, Mr. Sam Cruz.
The not-to-exceed resolutions are very flexible, and you can decide up until the time of the sale what to issue. I was going to say that the resolution, the initial resolution, would need to identify the project, because that's, this will be published in your local paper, and any project financed by the bonds. Now, just because it's in the initial resolution doesn't mean you have to do it, but if it's not in the initial resolution, you cannot do it, so.
Mr. Coleman, if you would address this question, based upon the previous action the county commission has taken, we authorize the county mayor to negotiate on that piece of property. And based on the report that Commissioner Hayes has indicated, his indication came over the weekend, and of course, it came to my attention just this afternoon, that the deal that we thought was struck may not be struck. Is it not true that the initial funding, when this was put together, and the funding for the resolution was reviewed, that this was to come through fund balance and not a bond fund? And if that's the case, does that have any impact at all on our proceeding with these, and should it be held separate? That's the question.
Again, Mr. Chairman, the timing is probably the critical thing. Let's take one route. Let's take the route that is going to be funded out of fund balance. If you do not pass a resolution tonight stating that, and the sale has to be done quickly before July, then you don't have the authority to do that. The same would go if we decide to go the bond route, and we don't include that in these resolutions. It's just a timing thing to get it done in a proper manner.
All right. You're the budget director. You've heard the dilemma that we're in. What is your recommendation, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem with the $750,000 coming out of fund balance, if that's the wish of this body. Just from a financial standpoint and accounting standpoint, I have a little problem taking fund balance to buy land, which is certainly a long-term asset. I think I would be more comfortable if you changed this to a not-to-exceed amount. But again, if the body wished to take that out of fund balance, I wouldn't have a problem with it, but that's just my personal feeling.
Okay. Commissioner Hayes, any follow-up?
Well, I guess I want to hear from some of the other members of this body. If we, it may not be possible to act anyway, because we don't know for sure about the situation. But it would be another month before we could have any way of knowing and get this body back together if it did happen. And I guess we just need some guidance. Do we care enough about this piece of property to do something that might help us along the way? And I just personally think we would regret it if we allow. And you probably all know which piece of property we're talking about. It's right there on the corner, on the same side adjoining of what we already have. The one heir did not want to sell at the time it was purchased.
Commissioner Smith?
If potentially speed is an issue in this acquisition, Mr. Coleman, the, if the settlement date on the bonds is August or beyond, when the monies are available, yes, we could amend to have not-to-exceed to include the possibility of that, but the money's not, might not be, could that not-to-exceed also, while the initial resolution included the potential purchase of the property, could it be worded to suggest that fund balance could be used in an interim and then repaid by the proceeds of the bond issue? Maybe counsel is the better place to address that question.
Unfortunately, I'm not bond counsel, so I'm not going to be real helpful. In terms of the legality of something from the organizational standpoint, that authorization might be appropriate. I don't know how it would impact on the bonds.
We might need the flexibility of both options, because we don't know enough details about the potential transaction. We have one other item here that gives us some flexibility, and that is Resolution '23 and '24, especially '23, that's going to be a capital outlay note that we're going to a bridge till we get to the bond. It's possible that that could be.
Yeah. I was going to mention one other possibility. You can, the way the IRS rules are set up, you can actually spend money, and if within 60 days of spending it, you pass a reimbursement resolution, then you can reimburse yourself with your next bond issue. So, basically, you would internally finance it for a period of six months, 12 months, but you would eventually recoup the money through your next bond issue. Now, the key to that is you have to take a proactive measure in passing a reimbursement resolution. But given the uncertainty of the project, that might be a fallback option, as you see if it materializes. If it materializes, you approve spending the money from your fund balance, but at the same time, you pass an intent to reimburse yourself from a future bond issue. And that's one possibility. I don't think the other question would have too much of an impact from a bond counsel standpoint about, you know, if it's the same logic. If you authorize spending your own money to do this, you can certainly reimburse yourself with this bond issue if you so choose.
Other, any follow-up, Commissioner Smith?
No, sir.
Other questions regarding this issue of the Ag Expo Park? Judy, that's how many acres?
5.9.
So, that's the acreage that's in the bend of the road. It's immediately. So that's the acreage that's in the bend of the road that's immediately behind-
Right, that has mobile homes there and pretty well grown up.
That's immediately behind our barns on the Ag Center, so. Other comments, Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman, we've had an opportunity to purchase a lot of property, this commission has over the last twenty years, and I must say that I've never seen anything quite like this process that we're going through now. I'm beginning to wonder if we're being leveraged, if we're being used to be leveraged for that property. I think we'd need to make the decision, do we want it or do we not want it? If we want it, we need to start the process in motion. They need to make a decision, do they want to sell it or not sell it? This is ridiculous. And I'd like to see us get the property, but my goodness, we've been kicking this around for, what, four, five months now?
Quite some time. Other comments?
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you a question.
Mr. Coleman?
And this certainly, I think, will go to Mr. Mosley. Procedurally, you don't have a resolution before you now to take this out of fund balance. Can that be brought forth late at this point in time, or can we use the resolutions you have before you in the form of these bond resolutions as an avenue through amendment to make this work?
I think it'd have to be amendment of existing resolution. You have, not only have you not hit the filing deadline, but you don't have a late filed resolution to see if the commission objected to or not. So I think it would have to be in the form of an amendment to the existing resolution.
Commissioner Green?
I think my question basically is back to the speed thing. How fast do we need to do this? We've been working on it for some time. We don't know that the property's available or not. Can we just begin the process all over again with a resolution to have the mayor enter into discussion with them whether the property is for sale or not? If we can work up something and go through the normal budget process? Does that create a problem as far as financing this amount of money if we just go through that process? I mean, is there a shortfall somewhere or are we getting ourselves into something else? But as Commissioner Hancock says, I think we're getting leveraged into something too quick. I would just soon see us go through the normal process.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if that was a question to me or not, but I, um, the question would be is if we go through the normal process and then it comes to funding that amount of money, we would have to do it through fund balance anyway, so, but how do we handle that? But I hate to get rushed into this thing. I know we need the property.
You can reimburse it after.
But. Mr. Chairman, I could try to address that. You know, I feel like our role is to try to give you the options of various kinds of financing, and if this body makes a motion to pursue it at any point in time, then we would bring those options to you. Certainly, we could do, if this comes in July or September, we can do a short-term capital outlay note until we get to the next bond sale, or we could take it out of fund balance. There are options there. And so, you know, I certainly don't want to present the picture that tonight, and this resolution is the only way. I just want to make it clear that this is the only thing we really have in front of us right now that gives us an option tonight to pursue that.
Thank you. Let me jump to Commissioner Ford. You've not spoken on this topic, please.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I tend to agree with my fellow commissioners that we're rushing into something here, and let's not forget, before we bring any property in, we've got to do due diligence on that property. So there are processes that we have put in place that we have to go through to make sure that it's suitable for whatever process, whatever we want to do on that land. We've got processes we still have to step through. If this body decides that we want to go ahead and push something through tonight, it appears to me the best way is to amend six six twenty-three, the capital general request, add in the seven hundred and fifty thousand, and then take the general obligation bonds up to a not to exceed twenty-six seven fifty. I'm like my fellow commissioners, I'm in favor of rushing that through, but it looks like if we do, that's the best way to do it to me.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
I remember the resolution giving the mayor to the authority to negotiate. Did, I don't remember the details of the wording. Did it specify any funding mechanism in case of acquisition of the property? So that did not give us any authorization to spend the money.
No, sir, did not.
Okay.
Commissioner Hayes?
My memory serves me that he was going to come back to us after the negotiation and had thought the negotiation had been successful and was supposedly sold to a higher bidder without any signatures. As I say, things are a little bit in limbo because this information came late Saturday. I don't know what the situation is other than if it has fallen through, it is a desirable piece for several different things, being zoned, interstate, commercial. And I thought if we did want to put our bid in or our wish in, we could possibly let the mayor know that and start our proceedings with coming back for funding mechanisms or coming back for the different committees. It was no intent to try to bypass that, but it's the wish of this committee. I think due diligence would be appropriate, certainly, and all could be subject to that.
Commissioner Brockman?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I do think this is an important piece of property. I just, I'm just feeling the same way that Commissioner Ford feels. I feel like we're being rushed into this, Commissioner Hayes, and I think we need to, I think we can do something on the short term if it does evolve into a project that we can acquire that land and it's appropriate in terms of what the due diligence comes back with. I just, I'm reluctant to move on this at this point. I just, I've seen us get into situations where we haven't found out everything that we need to determine, and so therefore, I think maybe if it really is pending and the buyer is not going to close, we have some time. And instead of putting it before this funding mechanism tonight, we can wait.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynch?
Mr. Chairman, members of this committee, we've talked about four months, Ms. Hayes and myself and the mayor and Dwayne Perry have been dealing with this man for four years. Whereas the day he decides to sell, we've got to have the money that minute. We can't wait six months to go through all this process we have to do. We need to do something tonight, and I'm going to amend one of these resolutions in a minute and try to do it. But we thought we've had it bought two or three times. You've got to have the money ready to buy it the day he decides, otherwise you're not going to get it. My personal opinion is, and if we ever expect the Ag Center to move ahead and get the big shows like we need to do well, we're going to have to condemn it, and that's a bad word, I realize. But me and Ms. Hayes have been dealing with this man for four years, and he's tough and tough. And he'll say he's going to sell it, he's going to do this, that, and then he backs out. We have got to have the money the day he decides to sell it to us. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to discuss this that has not addressed it? Okay, what's the pleasure of the group? Commissioner Lynch, you indicated some action there. You're prepared to move?
You want me to amend it now? Well, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay, Mr. Coleman, let's get back on track if we can, head down this train track. Six, we're ready to start on, have you finished your discussion?
Yes, sir. Unless you want me to stay here for questions or?
No, if you would, just stay right there. So let's get Resolution six oh six nineteen.
Commissioner, I have one other general question.
Yes, Commissioner Ford?
Commissioner Hayes brought up, Mr. Coleman, did I understand you to say that this is the first bond resolution that we've led in this? We did not let one in this current fiscal year?
It's the first year, I'm going back eleven years, and I can't remember another year that we haven't had at least one bond issue. Some years, we've had two.
Yeah, and do you know how much, and you may not know this off the top of your head, how much in principle we paid off in bonds and notes in the past year? And how much we're scheduled to pay off next year?
No, sir.
Close to forty? I guess my point is, we're paying off about as much as we're letting out here, so this is not a tremendous increase in the debt load.
I'd say that's very close, Commissioner.
Yeah, roughly.
I just hesitate to take those kind of numbers off the top of my head.
Okay, six oh six nineteen. Resolution of intent to fund the purchase of various two thousand and six seven county general capital projects in an amount not to exceed three million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand revenues to come from an upcoming bond issue. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Smith. Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee voted four, four, zero against.
Explanation, please. I guess, David, have you already explained it? Comments on this, Commissioner Green?
No, this is basically, it's listed there as to what the individual items were for a total of three million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. This is a bond issue. Did you take care of those various items? Being information technology, the jail, Williamson County Jail, emergency communications, emergency management, Ag Expo Park, and county buildings. And there's a small description underneath one of those listings as to what they're going to be doing at those locations and those departments.
Questions of Commissioner Green? Commissioner Ford?
I had two quick questions. Under the information technology, replacement laptops for W C S D, what is the W C S D?
Williamson County Sheriff's Department.
Okay, I was just making sure that wasn't schools. Second thing is, under emergency management, the Southwest Fire Station land purchase, will that go through our due diligence process before we purchase any land associated with that?
I don't think it'd be handled commercially different than any other land purchase. It's just a plan for the future. There's no site selected, to my knowledge.
I just want to make sure it goes through the process.
Other questions of Mr. Coleman or Mr. Green on number nineteen? I see none. If in favor of Resolution six six nineteen, press a yes button. Oppose, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution is adopted, twenty yes unanimously. Resolution six six twenty, resolution of an intent to provide an amount of up to eight hundred and thirty-three thousand for the purchase of various equipment, renovation, and construction costs for various convenience centers. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Lynch. Municipal solid waste board?
Three, four, zero against, one abstention.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
Yes, you can see the list of things that's proposed there. Nolanville renovation of the convenience center. We've had such unbelievable growth in several of these convenience centers that we're going to need to rework them and put additional trash compactors in them and make them double duty and do just almost a total workover. Nolanville was our first convenience center back eons ago, so it's certainly in need of that. Also, you notice the three compactors we need, waste oil containers. These are some things that just need to be improvements to our area for our citizens and also some building repair of our M R F.
Questions of Commissioner Hayes? I see none. Resolution six six twenty is up for consideration. If in favor, press a yes button. Oppose, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution six oh six twenty-one, resolution of an intent to provide an amount up to one million, three hundred and sixty thousand for the purchase of various equipment, renovation, and closure costs at the Williamson County landfill. Commissioner Hayes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Second, Commissioner Mills. Municipal solid waste board?
Three, four, zero against, one abstain.
Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
Mr. Bunkus is here, if any of you have any questions, but operating a landfill is a very expensive endeavor, particularly the state having so many regulations, concerns the closure and what has to be done for the closure cost, and that is a large part of this. Also, in the construction and demolition classifier, that's for our class three four to make that usable for alternate daily covering. We need the trailer, we need a rebuild grinder, and modifying our TARP station. All those things are necessary for the operation of our landfill.
Thank you. Questions of Commissioner Hayes? I see none. In favor of Resolution six oh six twenty-one, press a yes button. Oppose, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution six oh six twenty-two, resolution requesting the Williamson County Board of County Commissioners' approval of an intent to fund seven million, seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars for two thousand and six seven Board of Education capital financing needs. Commissioner Jones?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Langston the second. School board report, I don't see one. Education Committee?
Five, four, zero against.
Thank you. Budget Committee?
Budget Committee voted four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Jones?
These are the improvements that we need for our school system to maintain the buildings and repairs and new additions.
Any questions of Commissioner Jones on six oh six twenty-two? I see none. Six oh six twenty-two is up for consideration. If in favor, press a yes button. Oppose, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted. Resolution number six oh six twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the issuance of interest-bearing refunding general obligation capital outlay notes, series two thousand and six of Williamson County, Tennessee, and the approximate principal amount of two million, one hundred and ten thousand dollars, three hundred and seventy, making provisions for the issuance, sale, and payment of said notes, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of tax for the payment of principal thereof and Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Smith the second. Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee voted four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
Much as wet as this vine, I turned it over to David to explain what this is, but basically, it's the general capital, the county general capital request.
Mr. Coleman?
Mr. Chairman, as we said earlier, this particular one actually goes back to July of oh five that we've carried forward, and this will get us to the bridge loan until we get to the new bond issue.
Questions of Mr. Coleman on twenty-three? I see none. Six oh six twenty-three is up for consideration. If in favor, press a yes button. Oppose, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution unanimously adopted, twenty yes. Resolution number six six twenty-four, resolution authorizing the issuance of interest-bearing refunding rural school capital outlay notes, series two thousand and six of Williamson County, Tennessee, and the approximate principal amount of seven million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said notes, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of tax for the payment of principal thereof and interest thereon. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Smith. Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee voted four, four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green, Coleman?
Educational capital request for the rural school district capital outlay notes.
Any questions of Commissioner Green or Mr. Coleman on six oh six twenty-four? I see none. Six oh six twenty-four is up for consideration. If in favor, press a yes button. Oppose, you know button. Has everybody voted, wishes to vote? Court of vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Resolution unanimously adopted, twenty yes, zero no. Resolution number six oh six twenty-five, resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed twenty-six million dollars in aggregate principal amount of general obligation school and public improvement bonds of Williamson County, Tennessee. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Mills II, Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee voted four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
This is the initial resolution for the general obligation bonds. This allows us to go out and get the advertised 20 days prior to the issuance of the bonds.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Lynch?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend resolution number 6-6-25 to increase the amount of money not to exceed $750,000 for the purpose of buying the land at Ag Center up there to improve it, and we'll never get anywhere unless we do, to have the money where if the chance comes to buy it, if we can't buy it, then we can always take this out. But if we do this, it'll be here where we can use it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Hayes, to amend the amount of this resolution from $26 million to $26,750,000. We're adding $750,000 to the total of the resolution. That's your intent, and that's your second.
Yes. One other thing, Mr. Chairman, the City of Franken has annexed that, and they'll run the sewer out there where we won't have any problem with that if we do get it, and we can do due diligence on the rest of it.
Okay. Discussions, Commissioner Lynch, let's see, Commissioner Smith?
Two questions, Mr. Chairman. One is, the $750,000 amount adequate in order to accomplish the purchase of property if that becomes possible? Second question is, does the wording of the initial resolution need to be amended to include specifically the purchase of property as one of the uses of the bond money?
Is that not included in your amendment, Mr. Lynch?
Can begin.
Well, it can be. Of course, I doubt $750,000 is enough money, but that's better than nothing. Personally, I think that's what it's worth.
Mr. Coleman, any comment?
But we can get the revenue wherever we want to get it, whether it's fund balance or let it go on bond issue later on, but we need to have it where we can tie that man up.
Okay. Follow-up, Mr. Smith?
I'd like the bond counsel's comment about the wording of the resolution. Sam probably come forward, but yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I think under Section 1 of purpose, we would have to identify, change the wording there.
I think you could put language such as "purchase of property for blank" and then just "and," and then just continue on with the rest of it, and you would need that amendment if you plan to spend money for that purpose.
If Mr. Lynch's amendment includes that, I'm fine with it, I just...
I include the Ag Center with the money.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Hancock?
Mr. Chairman? If I could, could we go back over the timetable that we'll take with this particular issue as amended, if the amendment passes? And what I'm looking for is, what's the drop dead time on the $750,000? When does that come off the table as it relates to having to do something with the rest of the bonds?
Mr. Chairman, without some motion to allow us to go from fund balance, if all we're looking at are the bonds, then the cash itself would not be available till around August the 1st. And that doesn't mean that you couldn't negotiate, have a contract, and pending closing, you know, close to that date. But if the intent was to have the cash available before that, then probably this amendment, my Mr. Lynch would need to carry such wording as to allow us to take it from the fund balance and repay it.
We can do that, regardless of where we get the money, we just need the money available where we can get it, and we can take it out of the fund balance. When we've reached a certain point, we can take it out of fund balance and leave it in the bond issue, because it's for land.
May I follow up?
Go ahead, Commissioner Hancock.
David, what I was trying to, the point I was trying to get to is, when would we have to do something on this particular issue? When would we have to know whether that $750,000 was going to be in this issue, out of this issue? We certainly, if that property went sour, we wouldn't want to, we wouldn't want to float an additional $750,000 worth of bond. So if we go through the normal process with this $26,750, what will be the drop dead date as it relates to this part of it, in other words, they take it out?
Going back to Mr. Cruz's comments earlier, and he's certainly come back, is that we could make a move anytime before the bond sale, we get to that point, and this project's not approved, we could pull it out of the sale. So we probably have to, we're looking at about mid-July for our sale, so we probably would have to have an answer somewhere about the time of our July meeting, around the 10th.
Yeah, we've sort of, for planning purposes, I've kind of looked around July 11th or 12th as a sale date. You could actually advertise, I mean, for a $26 million issue, you could advertise the issue as $26,750 and actually take bids based on that amount, and on the day of the sale, reduce the amount to the winning bid. I mean, usually, you have a little bit of latitude even after the bids have come in to adjust the calculations, but it is the day of sale which is the drop dead date.
What is that actual date?
Well, it hasn't been set, but we were looking around July 11th or 12th.
That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Any other thing else, Commissioner Hancock?
No, sir, that's my, that's the answer.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Smith asked the several questions that I had, but I still have one lingering doubt about this, and it's really more of a comment than a question. If this land purchase does not go through and we approve this amendment, then we have bonded $750,000 that we don't need. My understanding is, after July, the sale date, we've already got the $26,750 out there. The land purchase never goes through, but we have a bond. Am I right about that, Mr. Coleman?
I think what we were shooting for here, if I understand Mr. Hancock, is we would have an answer before that date, and if the answer's no, then we would pull the money and we would not issue that part of the bond.
Okay, then a follow-up to that is, I'm a little uncomfortable with that whole process. We've been working on this for four years, and somebody's going to take us right up to the last second. That's a purchaser that really isn't that interested in helping us with the Ag Center, they're just interested in the bottom line dollar, which they could have had already. I don't think this has gone through the due diligence, I'd like to see it go through, and I'm not willing to vote for it until we see some due diligence go forward, and we don't know if the $750 is the right number, is it 1.2 million, whatever, we don't really know the figure, so I'm not supporting this to move forward with the few details that we actually know now.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Green?
Just to follow up on Commissioner Davis, in what timeframe could we have due diligence completed on this prior to that drop dead date of issuing the bonds? I mean, can we do it in that period of time? That's a question, I mean, we haven't answered that. I don't know what it takes to, timeframe to do due diligence on a piece of property, but we got a drop dead date in there.
I'm certainly in favor of acquiring this piece of property, but I don't, from a business perspective, see why we are going from our normal practices to buy a piece of property. Certainly, you can write a contract with this landowner and put contingencies in there that will tie him up for a good bit of time, and one contingency could be the passage of a resolution and the proper funding acceptable to this body. Rather than kind of putting the cart before the horse, I don't see a necessity to do that, and I'm not going to support the amendment, although I do support getting the property.
Thank you, sir. Other comments? We do have an amendment offered that's been duly made and seconded to increase the amount of 60625 to $26,750,000. Commissioner Lynch, follow-up?
I've been on this county commission 33 years. We have never dealt with a person like we're dealing with out there. We need this amendment passed where we know we're going to have the money if we get a chance to seal it up and sew up the deal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Commissioner Hayes?
I just noticed that Dave Crouch is out there. Would the chair entertain allowing him to address this need for this land?
Any objection to Mr. Crouch? I don't think there's any question we need to lay, and any objection to Mr. Crouch coming before us? Sir David Crouch, the Honorable Chairman of the Williamson County Fair Board? Did he go in the floor? There he is.
There he is.
Come on up, Dave. Don't mince any words, do we need that property?
We've, several of us have met with Steve White, with Bullock Smith, and looked at various plans for the future out at the Ag Park. The fair in our first year, as most of you know, for all practical purposes, outgrew our facility in year one. And there's various ways to deal with that, but this piece of property, under any circumstances that you look at almost, is a key piece of any plans that you've got for the Ag Park, and I would strongly encourage you to consider this amendment. We've had a couple of verbal agreements with the owner, and due to the process that governments have to go through, it's kind of hard to move as quickly as he likes to move, and I would like to see us have the funds available if he makes up his mind to sell it to us so that we can take action on a fairly short notice. I do second Mr. Smith's concern about the amount. I could see it need to be maybe a little bit more, and then let the mayor have the discretion to decide the final price, but I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Chaffin?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call a question.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor, call a question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question's been called for. So we're voting on the amendment to increase the $26 million to $26,750,000 for the purpose of purchasing property for the Ag Expo Park. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Record of vote, please?
Fifteen yes, five no.
Fifteen yes, five no. The amendment passes. So resolution 60624, as amended, is up for discussion and consideration. 60625, as amended, to $26,750,000. Any discussion on the amended motion? I see none. If you're in favor of this resolution as amended, press a yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please?
Twenty yes.
Twenty yes, zero no. Motion as amended, resolution as amended, is unanimously adopted, to $26,750,000.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I think you read this in the minutes, but it's very important that it does state that the purpose of the amendment is for the purchase of land for the Ag Park.
That was my statement before we voted, the purchase of the property for the Ag Park. Resolution number 60626, resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation school and public improvement bonds, Series 2006, and the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $26 million of Williamson County, Tennessee, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of premium, if any, and interest on the bonds. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Smith, second. Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee voted four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Any further explanation?
Just as states in the resolution, it's for the general obligation school and public improvement bonds to be issued.
Any questions? Do we need to make any amendments to this, Mr. Coleman, based on this action?
Yes, sir, we need the same amendment as on the previous.
Okay, so Mr. Lynch, if you could, would you make the same amendment for this resolution, please, sir?
I make the amendment to dead not to exceed $750,000 to probable purchase of the Ag Center propped out on I-65.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Commissioner Mills, the second. Discussion on the amendment, resolution 60626, to increase that amount to $26,750,000? See no discussion, it's loaded on the machine, the amendment is there. If you're in favor, press a yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please?
Seventeen yes, three no.
Seventeen yes, three no, to amend it, resolution 60626 is amended to $26,750,000. The resolution as amended is up for consideration. Any discussion on the resolution as amended? 60626, as amended, to $26,750,000. If you're in favor, press a yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Record of vote, please, Ms. Anderson?
Twenty yes.
Thank you. Resolution as amended, is adopted unanimously. Resolution number 60627, resolution authorizing the issuance of rural school bonds, Series 2006, and the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $20,250,000 of Williamson County, Tennessee, making provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of premium, if any, and interest on the bonds. Commissioner Green?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Langston II, Budget Committee report?
Budget Committee voted four-four, zero against.
Thank you. Explanation, Commissioner Green?
This is for the issuance of rural school bonds into the amount of $2250,000.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, I concur with Mr. Davis. In the past, when we have done these CONs, we have not done a resolution, opposed this resolution, to do this. We've done letters to the various, to the CON board to state our objections, whatever. As far as doing my due diligence on this, all I've seen is this piece of paper. I see an ad in the newspaper this weekend that says there's $19 million study done. Where is that? I mean, to me, we're not doing our job unless we analyze all the facts. These are facts, not an evidence. I would like to see this before I make a decision. I think we all should want to see that. Also, this ad sort of upset me because I think there's a material misstatement in here, because it basically says, it's a county asset operated by earned revenues and not supported directly by the taxpayers. Well, my estimation, I think we pay about, taxpayers pay about three cents in their property tax rate to cover the $20 million gift that was given to them for this expansion. So they do have a say in this, and I'm a little bit disappointed in the hospital for having an ad like this in the paper. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Moon?
I think next month, I'm going to be out of town, so this may be very well the last time you ever hear from me, so don't start cheering right away. And because it's the last time, I begin to see things more as a private citizen than a county commissioner, and I see things as, the quality in that hospital, I remember 25 years ago, when Catherine and I moved here, I remember telling her that if I was still breathing when I passed Williamson County Hospital, please take me to Vanderbilt, there was no way. The level of care there was recognized by community as not very good, and now it's outstanding. I myself have had several surgeries, and if this back doesn't heal, I'm going to be back there again. Again, as a taxpayer, I would ask you commissioners, why did you fund $20 million, invest $20 million in this hospital, and if I'm not mistaken, co-signed another $20 million? And if I'm not mistaken, co-signed another $20 million? If you're going to now not support that investment and in fact, consider investing in another entity that will draw a profit from that investment? It just doesn't make good sense, and I would question you as a private citizen, why are you doing that? I'm not hard about, in my consideration of the people in Spring Hill. Yes, they need medical care and yes, they need some prompt medical care. And I fully believe that the Board of Directors of our hospital will put a satellite facility out there and will do just like Vanderbilt and Baptist HCA does in their network, whereas they have their center treatment facility in Nashville and they have satellites which will take that basically funnel business to their main center. We can do the same thing and there's no reason why we shouldn't. I very much support the resolution in opposition. And that'll be probably the last time I get to see, talk to y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hancock?
Call a question?
Question's been called for and motion second. All in favor, call the question, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No's, raise your hand. One, two, three. Call the question is approved. So we'll be voting on Resolution six oh six seven. Resolution is opposition of the requested certificate of need for the proposed tri-star hospital, Spring Hill, Tennessee. Resolution is on the board. If you're in favor of the resolution, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. If anybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please.
Fourteen yes, one abstention, five no.
Fourteen yes, one abstention and five no. So the resolution is adopted. Fourteen yes, one abstention and five no. Resolution number six oh six nine, resolution setting the Williamson County Hotel Motel tax rate for fiscal year 2006/7. Commissioner Barnwell?
Move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Davis, Tax Study Committee? Thank you. Budget Committee?
voted four, four, zero against.
Explanation, Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes, this is our annual approval of the hotel motel tax. We have to do this every once a year. If not, it goes away.
Questions of Commissioner Barnwell on this resolution? I see none. Six oh six nine is up for consideration. If you're in favor, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. Everybody voted, wish to vote? Court of vote, please.
Nineteen yes, one no.
Nineteen yes and one no. Resolution six, and that one is adopted, Resolution six oh six ten, resolution to adopt the three-star strategic economic development plan, Commissioner Hayes. Second, Commissioner Langston, Economic Development Council, approve this 11 to zero. Explanation, Commissioner Hayes?
I know you're all familiar with the three-star program. That's the economic development program of the state where five years of planning goes into this. Diane has done a superb job in getting all this together. It has to go to the state, but needs to be approved by this body prior to sending to the state. Any questions you might have? Diane, of course, can address them or if I can't, so.
Thank you.
See some various reports in there.
Any questions of Commissioner Hayes on six oh six ten? I see none. If you're in favor, press yes button. Opposed, you know button. Court of vote, please.
Twenty yes.
Twenty yes, zero no. Resolution unanimously adopted. These announcements, to each of you, the July County Commission meeting will be second Monday in July. It will start at 9:00 a.m. We'll have a photo at lunch at the Ag Park. The package will include the budget documents and you'll be called to pick them up if you can. So the budget documents will be available. Remember the July Commission meeting, 9:00 a.m. here in this room, second Monday in July. Also, best regards to Jack Walton, Sr. He's recouping at home. Jackie's doing well. And also, a wish is to Sandy Green. She had knee surgery today at Williamson Medical Center. Commissioner Green, any, any Budget Committee report on that?
He's in trouble.
Other than I'm in the doghouse for being here, but no, I got a report from the doctor just before leaving and she just come out of surgery and both legs are the same length, which is good.
Lou, would you?
She's doing good.
Would you make the announcement about the budget public hearing here tomorrow night, please?
Yes, at 5:30 tomorrow night, public hearing on Budget Committee. So we need all Budget Committee members here.
Jack, anything update on your dad? Is he doing okay?
He's doing well. He had angioplasty and recovering well.
Wonderful.
Doing well, good spirits.
Great news.
Saw him last night.
Good.
Good and well. Thank you.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry I didn't do this during communication, but Saturday, which is June 17th, African American Heritage Society will be celebrating Juneteenth. It's time commemorating when some slaves found out that they were free. They didn't find out the same day that the proclamation, emancipation was signed. So in Tennessee, it was in, one part was in January and other parts in August. But we are having a celebration on the 17th and we'll have horseshoes and cake walks and just a lot of fun with people singing and everything. So we invite you to come out. I think it's from, it's at the Mackamore House and it will be from 11 to 4:00. So you are invited to come.
Very well. Commissioner Chaffin?
Just one quick thing. On the 4th of July, as we have for the last several years, the Sons of the Revolution conduct a bell ringing called Let's Freak Let Freedom Ring. And we ring the replica of the Liberty Bell that's on the Capitol grounds in Nashville and it's rung by direct descendants of the signers of the Declaration of Independence. So anyone is invited. Its program starts at 12 noon. The bell is rung precisely at 1:00.
Thank you, sir. Anything else? Entertainer motion to adjourn? Fifth, Commissioner Langston. All in favor, say aye. We're in adjournment until the second Monday in July.